Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, October 2nd. The time is now 7:34. Pursuant to the requirement of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 14, 2017 issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers is absent, excused. Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca?
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayors except for Commissioner Rogers, he is absent, excused this evening.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Minutes we have for August 20th, 2018, for special meeting.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's it for minutes.
Communications?
The Nutley Chamber of Commerce has submitted an event application to host Santa's arrival at the Nutley Park Oval on Friday, November 23rd, 2018, between 2:00 p.m. and 3:00 p.m., with the rain date of Saturday, November 24th, from 11:00 to 12:00. We need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Historic Restoration Trust of Nutley, Kansas Manor, has submitted an application for a social affair permit for wine tasting on November 3rd, 2018, on their premises from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, Mayor. We do have somebody from the Chiefs Association with our accreditation that I know the Chief's going to bring up, but before we do, if I could just request a moment of silence for Maria DePiero that we lost last week in the Public Safety Department. Maria was a long-life resident of Nutley, and her and her husband own the Nutley Pet Center, for those of us who remember when it was on Franklin Avenue. And then later on in life, she actually became a dispatcher in public safety, which I have to say is not an easy task to do at her age and learn a new profession, and she did a great job. She was a dear friend of mine, a dear friend of Nutley, is a dear friend of public safety, and I'd like to recognize her passing with a moment of silence. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to bring the Chief up.
Commissioner, I just want to bring up and introduce Harry Delgado from the New Jersey Chiefs of Police Association from the Accreditation Unit. Harry oversees all the accreditation for the entire state for all the police departments.
Thank you, Chief, and the mayor, and council. I'm here actually for a very good thing. I'm here to recognize the police department once again, and I say that because I was here three years ago, recognizing the department because they achieved reaccreditation. Now, they have achieved second reaccreditation, and I'd like to, if you indulge me for just a couple of minutes, share with you the significance of that accomplishment. So, there's over 560 agencies in the state of New Jersey that would be eligible to apply for accreditation, yet only about 100 of them have achieved accreditation in that because the process is very rigorous. But that's about 35% of the total agencies that would be eligible. I want you to remember that number, because those that are reaccredited, that means after they get accreditation three years later, so there are about 20% of those that have made that achievement. Now, when you're talking about agencies like the Nutley Police Department that have achieved second reaccreditation, that percentage drops to less than 12%. So, they're actually really a member of a very elite group of law enforcement agencies in the state of New Jersey that have achieved second reaccreditation. They've been accredited since 2011, so they have a history here following best practices, both state and national best practices. So accreditation is a process. The foundation of accreditation lies in the adoption of standards containing a clear statement of professional objectives. Accreditation is a progressive and time-proven way of helping law enforcement agencies calculate and improve their overall performance. It is a certification by an independent review and authority, in this case, the only legitimate accreditation authority in the state of New Jersey, which is the State Association of Chiefs of Police, that the agency was carefully measured against an established set of not only state but national standards. And in the case of the Nutley Police Department, I'm proud to say that in many instances, they exceeded accepted practices in the field of law enforcement. For some of the taxpayers, members of the public that are here, I should share with them that research shows that accredited agencies have 11% fewer police professional liability claims, 18% fewer worker compensation claims, and 31% fewer older liability claims. And I should add that some municipalities that participate in male-affiliated JIP stand to receive some significant premium discounts. In addition to these fiscal advantages, though, there are other very important benefits to accreditation. Accredited agencies are better able to defend against lawsuits and citizen complaints. Accreditation provides objective evidence of an agency's commitment to excellence in leadership, resource management, and service delivery. Government officials can be more confident in the agency's ability to operate efficiently and meet community needs. And accreditation embodies something that is very valued here in the Nutley community, and that is the precept of community-oriented policing. It creates a forum in which police and the citizens work together to prevent and control challenges confronted by law enforcement and provide clear direction about community expectation. Accreditation standards certainly give the chief a proven management system of written directives, sound training, and clear defined lines of authority, and routine reports that support decision-making and resource allocation. Certainly, officers in accredited agencies are able to take pride that they have been objective to measure for their professionalism and adhering to the high standards. At the end of those three years, this very rigorous process takes two days, where we come and we make sure that the agency shows tangible proofs through 105 standards in the state of New Jersey, many of which require more than one item approved. I should say, and I'll briefly share, and I'll finish with an excerpt, paraphrase what the assessors had to say about the Nutley Police Department. "The agency demonstrates exemplary performance in the area of community policing and outreach. This was evident through the numerous phone calls and contacts the assessment being received during the on-site. It is not unusual to receive praises from the public." It is unusual to receive a lot of praises from the public, as the Nutley Police Department did. "The agency utilizes its principles to deploy personnel within the community, to address concerns in quality of life issues in a proactive manner." The assessors believe, as I agree, that the Nutley Police Department is a professional organization with discipline and well-trained personnel. The agency has a strong organizational culture consistent with their experience in the accreditation process. They adhere to national and state best practices. Their leadership is progressive and forward-thinking. The high level of competence, leadership, and professionalism is evident within the agency. Finally, the Nutley Police Department, under the direction of Chief Thomas, excuse me, Thomas Frumolo, has achieved reaccreditation, demonstrating his commitment to maintaining his accredited status. So accreditation is valued here, following best practices is certainly something that they adhere to. So therefore, it is my privilege, on behalf of the New Jersey State Association of Chiefs of Police, and the New Jersey Law Enforcement Commission, to congratulate Chief Thomas Frumolo, Accreditation Manager Detective Lieutenant Ken Watson, the staff at the Nutley Police Department, the mayor, the council, and those citizens that they so proudly serve for achieving second reaccreditation, joining a very exclusive group of law enforcement agencies in the state of New Jersey that have made this important commitment to excellence in policing. So congratulations to all. This is the public. You clap. Thank you. We have the certification by Detective Keith. He will be the president.
Chief, let's take a picture first. Congratulations, Commissioner, and Chief. Commissioner?
I just want to take a second to first thank Harry Delgado and the New Jersey Chiefs of Police Association for coming out and providing the presentation, and all their guidance and support in helping us through this. They're not only the agency that comes and assesses us, but they also guide you throughout, you know, your time and direct you, and I appreciate that hard work and dedication. This wouldn't be possible without a lot of hard work from the entire department, starting from the bottom on up. Every officer, all the commanders, starting with Captain Irwin, Captain Green, Lieutenant Meery, and not without Lieutenant Ken Watson, who's the accreditation manager for the department. He's the hub of keeping all this process going. He manages this all year long, every day, making sure we're meeting all the standards, and he keeps the train moving, and without his hard work, we wouldn't be here. I support him. I know Detective Petracca supports him in everything we do, and again, as a team, we keep performing at the rate we're performing, and I want to publicly thank all his hard work and the entire department, because like I said, it is a team effort, and we have a great team. Lastly, I want to thank Commissioner Petracca for all your support and the entire board, all the commissioners, because without you guys, we wouldn't be where we are. I have to say, as the chief, there's nothing that I export isn't provided. One thing in this town that you guys come together on, that is public safety, and I appreciate it, I know the residents do, and I know all the officers do, because, you know, we have the best equipment, we have the best available to us, and with that, we're able to provide the service we do to the town, and guys work hard to keep Nutley what it is, and that's what we're here to do, to make sure Nutley stays the way it is and becomes the community that everybody wants it to be, and provide a family and work. So again, I personally thank everybody, and if there's anything you need from us, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations again to everybody.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, first of all, I'd like to thank the State Chiefs of Police for coming out and providing the presentation, and all their guidance and support in helping us through this. They're not only the agency that comes and assesses us, but they also guide you throughout, you know, your time and direct you, and I appreciate that hard work and dedication. This wouldn't be possible without a lot of hard work from the entire department, starting from the bottom on up. Every officer, all the commanders, starting with Captain Irwin, Captain Green, Lieutenant Meery, and not without Lieutenant Ken Watson, who's the accreditation manager for the department. He's the hub of keeping all this process going. He manages this all year long, every day, making sure we're meeting all the standards, and he keeps the train moving, and without his hard work, we wouldn't be here. I support him. I know Detective Petracca supports him in everything we do, and again, as a team, we keep performing at the rate we're performing, and I want to publicly thank all his hard work and the entire department, because like I said, it is a team effort, and we have a great team. Lastly, I want to thank Commissioner Petracca for all your support and the entire board, all the commissioners, because without you guys, we wouldn't be where we are. I have to say, as the chief, there's nothing that I export isn't provided. One thing in this town that you guys come together on, that is public safety, and I appreciate it, I know the residents do, and I know all the officers do, because, you know, we have the best equipment, we have the best available to us, and with that, we're able to provide the service we do to the town, and guys work hard to keep Nutley what it is, and that's what we're here to do, to make sure Nutley stays the way it is and becomes the community that everybody wants it to be, and provide a family and work. So again, I personally thank everybody, and if there's anything you need from us, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Thank you, Chief. Congratulations again to everybody.
Mayor, I'd just like to add, first of all, I'd like to thank the State Chiefs of Police for coming out tonight, Harry. Thank you so much. I have to say, there was a couple key words in there that really struck me tonight. The accreditation process started under Chief Holland, maybe, you know, I think it was eight years ago, right, Tom?
2011.
2011, so seven years ago. And I have to tell you, when you're faced with a lawsuit or something, you know, regarding police, when you go to court, the first thing out of the judge's mouth today is, "Are you accredited?" And if you say no, they say, "Why not?", because it's such a good tool to have your best practices. But I just want to thank, you know, the chief, everybody that worked on this through the police department. It really is a rigorous time in the police department where everybody's scrambling, and this is, you know, it takes a few months of everybody's effort, you know, and that's what I want to say, is that, you know, as a Nutley Police Department, which I'm most proud of, and I heard Harry say this, is our community policing and outreach is very important to me and the police department, that we are communicating with today's youth that we're reaching them, that we're talking to them, that we're in the schools, we're there after school, and, you know, hopefully, we could change a kid's life. And, you know, the commitment shown from the police department is overwhelming, and I see, you know, the police officers in the back. I want to thank each and one of yous, because I know yous all have a very important role in this, and I know that yous go above and beyond when this process comes. And again, I can't stress how painstaking it is. To be accredited is not an easy task to do. So, thank you, and keep up the good work, guys. Thanks so much.
Mayor, if I might?
Sure.
I'd just like to congratulate Commissioner Petracca and Chief Strumolo, and the entire leadership team in the police department, being somewhat involved with the insurance going back to 2011 when we first started. I know firsthand that this is no small feat, and it's even harder sometimes to be recertified. So, you guys did a great job, the men and women of the Nutley Police Department, we have great leadership. Please keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you again. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a shade tree report for the month of September 2018.
Bills, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for October 2nd, 2018. Public Affairs, $99,234.22. Revenue and Finance, $2,803,182.64. Public Safety, $45,848.54. Public Works, $68,169.45. Parks and Public Property, $718,572.53. Water Utility, $102,686,92. Total Payroll, $809,555.71, for a grand total of $4,647,250.1.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concern should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Will we move 462 Chestnut Street? Mr. Scarpelli, underneath Public Safety, I only have two questions. Forensic psychology? You have two bills. What's that for?
Forensic psychology.
It's under you. I would quickly note the answer.
Forensic psychology.
I'm just curious what it's for.
It could be a couple things. I don't, I don't, I didn't, I don't see it right now, but it's either for, I mean, what was the dollar, ma'am? Do you see it?
$9.50 each.
It's psychological exams. So when we're hiring, when we're going through a hiring process with the police or fire department?
Are we hiring more people?
Well, we did in the past. When we did in the past. We just put, yeah, we just put police officers on.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, and that, and this, you're not worried, that was part of the grant that we got, too.
I remember the grant.
Yeah.
I thought that would have been covered by the grant.
Well, it's, you're good wishful thinking.
And the only, the other question is, the Essex County Prosecutor's Office, we had to pay them $950?
Do you, Sam, do you know what that was?
Okay, so we'll get back to him tomorrow on that, and we'll clarify it.
First, Sam will tell me the answer.
I'm sure she will. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the Board on agenda items only?
Amy Salento, 70 Newman Avenue. I have a question about number 220-18, insertion of revenue in 2018 budget for general appropriations in the sum of $48,312.89, Clean Communities Program Grant. So it's, there's a reference to the budget. Is it still a draft budget?
Commissioner, you want to address that? Do you want to look, is it a draft budget?
It's not a draft budget anymore.
Okay, so if it's not a draft budget, when was the public workshop that was going to be held after the state aid came in? There was a mention of that at a previous meeting, that there would be a public workshop.
There's no public workshop required. We already held, we introduced the budget, we had, prior to introducing it, we had a workshop on the budget. The only thing we had left after doing the public hearing before adoption of the budget was to actually wait for the number of our, for the state aid, which we did last week when we continued the meeting until we got that number. And we did, we did get the number on Friday.
Okay, so I'm just confused. I understand there was a public budget workshop in, I think, end of February, I was here, but there was going to be a public hearing on the budget you just mentioned?
Yes, there was a budget amendment that was on Friday of last week to include an item of revenue for the state aid. I was going to speak about this at the public comment, should I do it here, or should I wait?
You might as well go on.
So you're, so rather than trying to answer your questions one-on-one, I was just going to explain, explain this. We continued the meeting last week in order to-
Wait, do you mean two weeks ago, or last week?
Two weeks ago, yes. Two weeks ago. We, we had to extend the meeting, continue the meeting, because we were hopeful that we were going to get a state aid number by Thursday of that week. We were negotiating heavily that week, and we were able to have the budget meeting on Friday of that, of the end of that week. And in doing so, I was able to share with the commissioners then, and in the public session, that we were fortunate in actually receiving $4.1 million in additional transitional state aid, which is greater than the $3,675,000 that we got the year before, and greater than the $3.1 million that we were able to anticipate in the preliminary budget. So there was a budget amendment to increase the budget revenue, and as well as just for the appropriation for the amount we have to give to the school and the county, we did that budget amendment, and there is a public hearing on the budget amendment for that one line item, and then we voted the budget. So the budget is fully adopted for, for the current year with a new item of revenue, which was an increase from the $3.1 million that was originally in the introduced budget to $4.1 million, which is what we were able to receive.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm not still following on when this public hearing was. You're just saying there was a public hearing of the budget after the state aid came in.
Yes, in the morning, when we had the continuation meeting, we did a budget amendment, and then we introduced the budget amendment, and we held comment on that budget amendment, and then introduced the budget. No one was, was present other than the commissioners, and I think Tap into Nutley was there for, for that, that morning meeting.
So how, I don't, I don't understand how that's a public meeting. I really don't. So can you explain to me?
It was a continuation of a public meeting. We extended the meeting. You were here.
No, I, sorry, I wasn't here two weeks ago, but thank you.
Okay, I think you came late then, maybe you didn't see the first part of it. And we continued it to that Friday morning so that we could vote, otherwise, we would have lost some other additional appropriations that we had to adopt the budget by a certain date. So it was fully, it was publicized, we notified everybody, we said it at the meeting here, and we had to continue it that morning, otherwise, we would have lost additional funds, Commissioner.
Right. There's a statutory deadline, which was the 21st of September, for striking a tax rate, getting a tax rate certified. That was the crisis that we were in trying to get a state aid number, which took until September 20th to get the number, and then during the day on the 20th, then we held the meeting the next morning so that we didn't miss the statutory deadline. If we had missed that statutory deadline, there was, we were risking $220,000 worth of added assessed revenue for the current year.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. So then, in terms of what's listed here on the agenda, insertion of revenue, would it be amending, amending the revenue line to insert this budget item?
What this would, what this would do, who's, who's that?
So Clean Communities, so as grant money comes in, Commissioner can clarify this, as grant money comes in, it comes in at various times through the year, and in order to get that into the budget, you have to have a budget insertion, which is what we're doing tonight.
Okay, so I just was trying to understand, was it an already approved budget? So you just, it's termed insertion, it's not termed amendment?
It's revenue, and it's a grant, and so it has to be inserted in the budget, and it didn't become available until the last couple of days.
Okay, so then my other question, thank you very much for that. Since the state aid went up by, you know, a few hundred thousand, were there things added back to the budget?
No.
So it's a net gain in revenue?
What it did is, it went to lower the tax increase, it was, went directly to tax relief-
Okay.
-for the year, and so since you're raising it, the, the effect, when you think about it, we went through a budget process that started September of last year, through the introduction process, with a huge variable out there related to aid. It wasn't until now, the end of September, that we were able to actually finalize and say, "What's our revenue number? What's our expenses?" So at the end of the day, you know, it's very simple, it's a very simple, simplified process in that through the work that the Board of Commissioners did, we held our cost increases for the, for 2018 to $64,000, which is well less than 1%. The increase that in the tax levy is related to the fact is that while we did receive $4.1 million in aid, in previous years, we received $5.5 million in aid. So there is an effect, a catch-up to recognize the lower aid, which came through in the tax rate this year. But even with that, when you look at the tax, the tax increase, when you consider school, county, and municipality combined, it was 1.1%, which was well less than the 2%, well less than the rate of inflation.
Okay, so I didn't actually look on the website. Has the budget been posted?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, move on to Commissioner announcements. Commissioners, any announcements?
Just one, Mayor. I just want to thank everyone for making our festival in the park the rousing success that it was. We had beautiful weather, we had great stands, we had amusements for, for young children, there was something there for everyone, great food trucks, and it was just another great day in Nutley with another great Nutley tradition that we're carrying on.
Couldn't get better weather.
Oh, wonderful weather. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other announcements?
Yes, Mayor. Just to put a cap on the budget discussion, the temporary state aid that we've received, when you roll back to 2014 coming forward, we've received a total of $21,525,000 worth of additional aid to help us offset the loss of revenue that occurred as a result of the shutdown of the Hoffen La Roche property. Because of that, the Board has been working very, very hard on the conversion of that site. So the ability for us to envision having a medical school there, as well as Modern Meadow, a huge retail outfit, Ralph Lauren, as well as the Hackensack Research Arm that's there, just to occupy the existing buildings, has been greatly enabled by the fact that we were able to get the temporary aid. Otherwise, we, as taxpayers, starting in 2014, would have had to absorb a $6 million revenue. Having received the aid, it helped us offset that cliff that none of us actually could afford. So the good news is, is that the temporary aid has been very beneficial to the town, and as a result, taxes on average are about $2,000 less than what they otherwise would have been on an accumulative basis since 2014. So we continue to need the aid, we will need that for a little while longer, but it's enabling the town to actually really focus in on what the really long-term beneficial conversion would be of the Roche site. So I just wanted to share that the aid continues, we continue to have the support of the current administration down in Trenton, and so I hope that we will look forward to more aid next year. Just another quick point is voter registration. The town hall will be open on the 16th, which is our meeting night, until 9:00 p.m. to accept new voter applications, which is, is in keeping with the deadline for, for new voters. And the last thing was that I had previously said that I was going to launch a series of information updates as it relates to the code enforcement department. I'm pleased to let everyone know that if you can go to the website, you'll find the first in a series is posted on the website. It relates to the allowable uses for attics, basements, garages. Also, since we do have a lot of students that are coming into town, there's been an increase in people asking questions- increase in people asking questions about having a border in their house. So this actually announcement covers what's the allowable use in a home for a border versus having a tenancy, a landlord tenancy relationship that's otherwise wouldn't be allowed. And the last piece of it relates to the ongoing need to continue to update your CO when you have a change in a rental relationship, whether it's a commercial or residential. So just, it's out, it's up on the website and stay tuned because we see it as a series where we'll have other updates, probably one a month. So hopefully that people will find it to be very useful and informative and help them avoid making some mistakes with our code. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other announcements?
I'd just like to, two things real quick. Rory, that expenditure was for training at the prosecutor's office, just so you know. The other thing I'd just like to mention, I don't know if you're going to touch on this tonight, but I did attend the meeting at Roche with the governor and, with the commissioners and the mayor. And I have to say, to me, it's so refreshing to see all the hard work that we did up there with, you know, Roche site starting to come to life. To see cars in the parking lots again and a little traffic over there and, you know, is very refreshing. It's, I, I think we're way ahead of the curve of what the forecast was in the beginning. And, and I have to say, to see those buildings, the students, to have that luncheon that we had in the park a couple of weeks ago, I guess it is already, it's just really an exciting time in Nutley. I do unfortunately visit some of these sites and see what people post. And it's, to me, it's a lot of negative stuff at times and I have to say, I mean, you know, I think that we really need to start selling our town again and looking at some of the positive things that are going on here because there's going to be a tremendous amount of job opportunity on that road site. It should really help business, businesses, you know, all over town. I know it's helping mine a lot of late. And I think it deserves, you know, a minute tonight just to recognize, you know, how exciting that site is. And not to mention, and I think, Tom, you said this before, you know, to have a Modern Meadow there and Ralph Lauren and, you know, I did sit next to Ed from Prism, you know, and he continues to tell me that the outcry to come to that site is really overwhelming. So it just goes to show you that, you know, Nutley is a desire, desirable place to do business and, and also to live in. So I hope we keep that up.
Thanks, Commissioner. I think when you, when you look at that, the governor chose Nutley to come in, deliver his economic plan for the state. And we had every cabinet member there, we had mayors from around the state, we had those legislative leaders, we had congress, congressmen there, you know, to highlight that, that campus. And having him talk about his innovations and what he's going to do as far as technology and, and what his plan was for the state in reviving our economy was certainly a feather in our cap in having everybody come to that site. And as Commissioner Petraco said, when you look right now with Ralph Lauren signing their lease a couple of months ago, four of the five vacant buildings will be filled. We have Modern Meadow, we have Hackensack Meridian doing cancer research, we have NJIT doing cancer research. The medical school, the school of nursing, the allied health professionals from Seton Hall, all those students on the campus right now coming in and out of there, probably somewhere around 1,000 to 1,200 students in and out of there a day, along with the faculty and administrators. Modern Meadow has planned to add 200 jobs. Ralph Lauren decides taking their financial people from New York and Lynn Hurst, they're going to add another 225 jobs there. So I think when you look at the job opportunities for our residents, the desire to be around here as people need to be close to work, our property values should increase. And the local economy, as the commissioner said, you know, people have someplace they have to go and eat. And by having our welcome day, we had a beautiful day, the park was beautiful, Commissioner Tucci made sure the park was, was in tip-top shape. And we had 200 to 300 people from off that site come and visit, 18 of our food establishments along with 20, 20 more businesses. And it was a great day and it certainly was welcomed by everybody there and I know it was welcomed by our businesses and welcomed by the commissioners. So I think it was a, a good start. In the last couple of weeks, we've had some good, some good publicity.
Very good.
Ordinance, let's move to ordinance introductions. Ordinance number 3399, ordinance to amend ordinance 412 of the Code of Township in Nutley entitled War, more specifically, Chapter 685, Article 1, Regulations and Rates. I move the ordinance to be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at a second reading on November 7, 2018. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Let's move to public hearings. Commissioner, you want to take number 3393?
Sure. This, open the public hearing. This is an ordinance, amended ordinance. This is basically Commissioner Rogers' ordinance, which modifies and amends some of the salaries for four positions, I'm sorry, five positions.
Lower system. Lower system.
Yes, lower, I was getting there, thank you. Yes. It amends them and thank you, Commissioner. He absolutely lowered these salaries because after he did a comprehensive review, felt that they were, they were a bit high. So having said that, my piece of this is just in the back section. It's Section 4, which relates to some previously adopted ordinances. So if anyone would like to be heard on this ordinance, I'll try and answer it as best I could.
Anybody would like to be heard on ordinance number 3393? Seeing none?
Move, we close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Ordinance number 3396, Commissioner Petraco?
Yes, I have ordinance number 3396. This is for a handicap parking spot at 41 Dodge Street. I move to open the public hearing.
Anybody would like to be heard on ordinance number 3396? Seeing none?
Move to close?
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Ordinance number 3397, we're going to postpone the public hearing on that. We're still tweaking some of the revisions. If you remember, we, we took the planning board's recommendations and put it into a form of ordinance. Commissioners have some further tweaks on that, most notably the percentage of two-bedroom and one-bedroom apartments. So we're still working on that and we'll postpone the public hearing until the time that we have a consensus on all the, the changes in that ordinance. Let's move to resolutions. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for sealed bids for surplus equipment that is no longer in use by the township. The equipment vehicles are listed below and there are three of them. One is a 2006 Bluebird Model Bus, mileage 125,281 miles. The second is a 2000 GMC Pickup, 1,500, four-by-four with 87,310 miles. And the third is a 2003 Toro, 328D, four-wheel drive with 4,576 hours on it. Be it further resolved that the equipment is sold as is and where is and bids are to be received on Wednesday, October 24, 2018, at 3:00 PM prevailing time in the commission chambers, Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly opened and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has a need to acquire specialized professional services for accident and safety review consultation. And whereas the municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a request for qualifications for accident and safety, accident and safety review, now therefore be it resolved that sealed requests for qualifications shall be due on Wednesday, October 24, 2018, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, addressed to the municipal clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Department of Parks and Public Property has a need to acquire specialized professional services for risk manager. And whereas the municipal clerk is hereby authorized and directed to advertise for a request for qualifications for consultant and risk manager, now therefore be it resolved that sealed requests for qualifications shall be due on Wednesday, October 24, 2018, at 3:00 PM prevailing time, addressed to the municipal clerk, Nutley Township Hall, 1 Kennedy Drive, Nutley, New Jersey. Just as, as a point of information, these last two resolutions whereby we're retaining an accident and safety consultant and a risk manager are both paid through the joint insurance fund. They are part of our procedure to analyze different risks and different accidents that we have in town. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized and professional ACA reporting services to ensure compliance with IRS regulations for the year 2018 reporting. And whereas such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriate. And whereas Prime Point LLC located at 2 Springside Road, Mount Holly, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal dated September 27, 2018, with an anticipated cost of $6,300 to complete these services and assure compliance on behalf of the Township of Nutley. And whereas funds are available from budget account 801-526200 and have been certified by the chief financial officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Whereas Prime Point LLC has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies Prime Point has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Prime Point from making any reportable contributions throughout determined contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey hereby authorize the Commissioner of Parks and Public Property to enter into a contract with Prime Point LLC to comply with the Affordable Care Act. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. The next resolution, I'll read by its title and in part, "Resolution of the Township, Commissioners of Nutley Authorizing a Contract with Banker Group LLC for Services Relating to the Review and Preparation of the Fiscal and Financial Impacts of the Redevelopment of a Portion of the Hoffen Roche Redevelopment Project." This relates specifically to the phase, which is known specifically as Phase 2A. All right. There, where there exists a need for the Board of Commissioners to have a financial impact analysis and related consulting services to be rendered by a professional relating to a portion of the redevelopment site under local redevelopment and housing law, NJSA 48:12A. Whereas the scope of such analysis, Banker Group will work with PV Nutcliffe and Prism Capital. Fees associated with its contract are not to exceed $17,500. Funds are available on account 801-226205 and have been certified by the chief financial officers, officer. Whereas the above consulting services are required for certain specific professional services to be rendered or performed by a person or persons authorized by law to practice a recognized profession. Said professional services cannot reasonably be described by written specification. And whereas the Banker Group has completed and submitted the Business Entity Disclosure Certification, which certifies that the firm has not made any reportable contributions or to, to a political candidate or candidate committee in the township in the previous one year that would violate NJSA 1944820.5 and any and all relevant executive orders. All right. Whereas the Commissioners have reviewed the qualifications of the Banker Group and has determined them appropriate and acceptable and consistent with the professional financial impact analysis related to consulting services required by the board for Phase 2A. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that in accordance with the local public contracts law, the board hereby authorizes and approves a contract with the Banker Group for professional impact analysis related to consulting services relating to, interesting, Phase 2A of the HLR redevelopment project as described herein at a cost and contract amount not to exceed $17,500. I want to point out that because this relates to the redevelopment plan, these costs are fully reimbursable by the redeveloper. Be it further resolved that the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized and directed to execute and seal, seal and deliver this said contract for professional services on behalf of and in the name of the township. Be it further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and business entity disclosure of campaign contributions place, be placed on file with this resolution and be further resolved that a copy of the resolution shall be published as recorded by law within 10 days of its passage. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, State of New Jersey, the Treasurer B and G is hereby authorized to refund permit fees for work not being completed in the amount of $521 for the block, lock and blots that are listed here in the resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Township Treasurer be and is hereby authorized to refund escrow monies in the amount of $521. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the zoning board of adjustment received an escrow deposit in the amount of $1,500 from Work Co. 2, Inc. for the property located 4248 Franklin Avenue in Nutley. Whereas the escrow free fee of $1,500 was collected and deposited in account T15910911. And whereas the zoning board of adjustment has reviewed and determined that the $1,500 is due to, to be refunded to Work Co. 2, Inc. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, the Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund the escrow fee in the amount of $1,500. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Petraco?
Yes, I'm just going to read this by title. These are insertions to the budget as we just spoke of. This one is for 5,500. This is Resolution 218-18. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
This, Resolution 219-18 is an insertion into our budget for 6,600. Just to save some time, I'm going to pass the resolution as written.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And the last one is Resolution Number 223-18. This is our COPS grant. This is actually 173,675.98. I have to tell you, I'm very proud of this grant. Everybody worked hard. We were only one of the three agencies in the state to receive this grant. I move the resolution number 223, 223-18.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petraco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that Janice Garcia, an employee of the Department of Public Safety, has granted an extension of medical leave of absence without pay effective through October 31, 2018. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. This is Commissioner Rogers' Resolution, Resolution Number 228-18. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, recognize October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Be it further resolved that we urge all women and their families in the Township of Nutley to seek assistance in obtaining the facts and information about breast cancer, mammography, and available support groups for victims, and to participate in the program scheduled this year for residents of the Township of Breast Cancer Survivors. And be it further resolved that residents are encouraged to join the Thriving Survivors and celebrate the lives of Nutley women who have been affected by breast cancer by attending the 16th Annual Nutley Thriving Survivors Walk on Friday, October 5, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. at the John H. Walker Middle School, as well as the 16th Annual Thriving Survivors Brunch on Sunday, October 28, 2018, 11:00 a.m. at the Forest Hill Field Club, 9 Belleblev, in Bluefield, New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Resolution Number 220-18. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey hereby requests the Director of Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget for the year 2018 in the sum of $48,312.89, which item is now available as revenue from the Clean Communities Program Grant pursuant to provisions of the statute. And be it further resolved that a like sum of $48,312.89, being the same as hereby appropriated under the caption of General Appropriations Operations excluded from the 5% cap, Clean Communities Program, $48,312.89. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas raffle applications have been received from the following organization, Nutley Irish American Association, License Number 3418, Off-Premise 50/50 Cash Raffle to be held Friday, December 14, 2018, whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are approved and Municipal Clerks authorize to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or Presiding Officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of the municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. I'm addressing you, the Commissioners, and I'm also addressing you, the citizens of We all need to get behind the term limits for these reasons. Provide opportunities for new appointees to offer current insights, to cultivate new leadership that builds on work of former members, to ensure board members with new ideas, new passion, and a fresh perspective, to provide an opportunity for more Nutley citizens to serve on our Board. At the last VOC meeting, I asked each one of you if you would support term limits. Commissioner Rogers said he was in support of term limits. Commissioner Petracco, you said you had to think about it. Have you had the opportunity to think about whether or not you would support term limits?
Term limits for what boards?
For the quasi-judicial appointed boards that would include the Planning Board, the Zoning Board, the Rent Leveling Board, and the Library Board.
And how long of a term would you be proposing?
They would be two terms for four years each.
Yeah, I mean, I have to tell you, I am up in the air about it. I understand the just of it, and I do think it's a good idea, because I like, you know, I think the Mayor said at the last meeting, or somebody did up here, about, you know, people do get stale, kind of, and, you know, not 100% into it. But, you know, when I was the Mayor here at Tammy, I have to tell you, I've asked people to be on the Planning and Zoning Board, and most of them said no to me. You know, a lot of people don't want to get involved for whatever reason, don't have the time. So I do have mixed emotions, because when you do get a good board member, and, you know, they have the best interest in your town at heart to, you know, be confined to a term limit, you hate to see a good person go away. So I'm, I don't want to sound sketchy or too much like a politician tonight, but I have, I think there's a lot of pros and cons to it, and I'm just not ready to commit to a definite yes or no right now.
Okay. And Commissioner Tucci, you also said you needed to think about it.
Yes, I did, and I have thought about it, and I believe that we need, I don't know that just broad brushing this with term limits is the right approach to it. I think we need to take it on an individual basis. If you have someone who continues to contribute, then I think that person should be reappointed. If you have folks that are in fact stale and may just be there because they've been there, then I'm all for replacing those folks and getting some new ideas and getting some new energy on some of the boards and perhaps a new perspective. But just to broad brush and say, I believe term limits are the way to go, that's not where I'm at.
Okay. And Commissioner Evans?
I would agree with Commissioner Tucci. Term limits, just an arbitrary limit, it says two, two terms, to evaluate what one's contribution to the Board is, their energy, their actions and their activity with the Board, their interest in the town, especially when you're asking someone to volunteer, to go to school, to take, to learn how to do the job well, to actually invest the time to go through the plans that are presented, because as you said, it's a quasi-judicial Board. They sit there as a judge of evidence that's being presented by application and by experts. And to have the interest in judging that according to municipal land use law, I think takes a dedication on the part of an individual. So if they are serving well, and they're investing that time, and they have the energy to do that, I don't think you judge that by simply saying two terms.
And how long would that coursework take for a new individual serving on the Planning Board side?
There's courses that they have to take. I don't know where they all are. That would be a question when you're before the Planning Board, ask the Planning Board.
So then, Mayor Scarpelli, are you willing to have citizens send their resumes to you if they're interested in serving on any of the boards?
Absolutely.
And you will respond?
We'll put them in and see if we have an opening, and then we'll take it from there. But anybody, anybody wants to send me a resume, they want to express interest in serving on one of our boards, I'm well open to it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Amy Solento, 70 Newman Avenue. So at the previous meeting, I was actually not in attendance on September 18, but I did watch a video, and there was a question from Ms. Rossi about an employee manual, and I think the response was that there is a template and that it's being, I guess, worked through in terms of refining it or defining it for Nutley, and that it would have to be completed by the end of the year. I think there's a deadline of some sort.
Yes, I'm working on it right now. It's actually close to being completed.
Okay, great.
I have to distribute it to the Commissioners for their review, and hopefully in the next couple of meetings, we'll have something to produce.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gentempo. So at a prior meeting, I asked about conflict of interest screening, and is there a process for town employees and/or board members? Is there a section or a category in the template for that?
Yes, there is.
Okay. Thank you. So I want to ask a question about the agenda process. So there's been a draft agenda for tonight's meeting on the town website and even up until 6:00 p.m. tonight, and there was an item listed on there for Board of Education/Discuss School Bond Issues, which is not on the final agenda. So when does the final agenda get cut, and can it be posted prior to the meeting?
Generally, if I may, Mayor, may I answer? Generally, we try to have the agenda completed by Friday. We ask everyone to produce all the items for the agenda by Friday so we can put it on the website, and hopefully it's the one that we'll produce. A lot of times, things fall off the agenda. We try not to have that happen, but sometimes we have to add things to because they're last-minute things and they have to be dealt with in terms of the business. I don't know the reason why the Board of Education fell off the agenda.
I can answer that, Mr. Gentempo.
I'm sorry, Mayor?
They had expressed an interest in coming to a meeting, and they just couldn't make it tonight. So that's the reason it fell off.
Well, thank you so much for that response. I am curious, I got involved, started coming to the meetings last November, maybe beginning of December, because of the bond issue and how many people were so distraught over taxes and what's going on with the schools, and how can anybody be asking for $70 million? And what I had hoped was that there would be sort of an ongoing, constant public discussion between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Ed. We're really just a little more than a month away from the vote for the latest referendum or the two-part referendum. So will there be a Board of Ed, Board of Commissioners, public meeting prior to the vote?
If they can come to our next meeting, I don't know if they're going to be able to come to our next meeting, but, you know, it's their referendum.
Right. Thank you. Okay, and there have been some prior questions from various citizens at meetings about the Economic Development Advisory Committee, and I believe that the response has been that that committee was suspended because of ON3 redevelopment. Well, as we've heard tonight, and some of us were a part of, there was a welcome event, there are many businesses, the medical school and the interdisciplinary health sciences school is up and running. So is there a plan for the Economic Development Advisory Committee for the town of Nutley to be reestablished in light of the fact that ON3 is really in process now?
I have to think about whether or not I'll bring it back. It was a subcommittee that I formed to help me look at these various issues that we were facing as a town. The committee worked very hard and made several recommendations that because of the Roche development, redevelopment, we couldn't move forward. So for example, one of, one of the areas was looking at the signage, wayfinding across town, and we're just beginning to get into that with the Roche property and basically leveraging that recommendation. So I have to see whether, what the value would be of reconstituting that committee again. I'd like to see stronger participation and action by the part of the Chamber of Commerce, which exists in Nutley for all of those businesses, because they have huge potential to benefit from the increase in traffic and activity that will happen on the ON3 campus. So I have to give it more thought.
So I thank you for that. I am a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'll bring this back to the chamber. I am curious as to, you know, what the view is from the other Commissioners about an Economic Development Advisory Committee. I'm not sure why it would just lie with one Commissioner to decide that.
Well, it was Commissioner Evans' committee, and I think we're all working towards economic redevelopment as we go forward on the Roche site, and how it's going to move forward and involve our downtown. And I could tell you, it's in discussions all the time as we, as we move forward. We've just facilitated, as a member of the Chamber of Commerce, we've just facilitated having the Chamber of Commerce meeting be ON3 this month. That was through this Board of Commissioners and working with the developer to have the Chamber of Commerce there. So those kind of actions are ongoing all the time.
Right. Thank you. I'm very much looking forward to that luncheon, the chamber luncheon. I think it's on the 18th. So my last question is, there was a prior announcement on the September 4 meeting about the investigation of the apartments, 13, I think that were built as two-bedroom instead of one-bedroom, and I think there are an additional 18 apartments that were built, which I'm not actually sure how many bedrooms those each have. So it's been a month, and would like to know what the timeline is for information being provided to the public.
I can, I can answer that for you.
Thank you.
We're, believe it or not, we're still discussing it. We're having meetings with counsel on both sides. We're still looking at the investigation for some issues regarding resolutions. So we're really trying to finalize this. We were hoping to have it done by this timeframe, not necessarily today, but in the next week or two. We're trying to do that. We're working very hard at it. There are a lot of complicated issues. It's not just a simple thing. But we'll, again, I promise you, the Commissioners have vowed that whatever the result is, it will be made public, and everyone will have a chance to see it. But we're still working at it. We have meetings tomorrow about it. So that's the best that I can tell you at this point until it's finalized.
Okay, and I would like to confirm, thank you very much, is the time that is spent, you're saying "we," so I assume that that's you.
I meant "we" as attorneys for the Township.
So who's paying those attorney fees in terms of the additional time? This is taking an awful lot of time.
Well, I don't get paid for those discussions. I have my normal compensation for being town attorney. I'm not getting paid for that, and we're getting reimbursed as part of it by the developer.
Okay, thank you very much.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Maria Bazza, 209 High Street, excuse me. My topic is also on term limits, but I believe in term limits for the five of you. And I remember Commissioner, uh, the Mayor, you said...
Mrs. Bazza, can you speak up? It's hard to hear.
I said, I remember a few meetings ago, you said that you would leave it up to the electorate to make that decision. However, I don't think the electorate are properly informed of what, what is happening here. For example, I know you have a county job that was given to you, which was obviously because the job led to another. All, several of you...
Mrs. Bazza, let me just tell you that I had my part-time county job before I was a Commissioner, just so you know.
Okay, but it's still, you know, public service, and, you know, several of you receive health benefits, which is added to your salary, and there are other perks involved. So I think the electorate should be, should be informed of that before we make a decision to come to vote, if you say that you're leaving it in the hands of the electorate. None of this information...
It's all, it's all public knowledge, Mrs. Bazza. What you're saying is, it's all public knowledge.
Yeah, it's public knowledge, but people don't know about it. What about, you know, informing them that in addition to $2,500, you also get, several of you get health benefits, which costs, you know, which is part of taxpayers' money. You get other jobs, you give jobs to your family members. I mean, that's all part of it. So I think you ought to make that, you know, you ought to inform the public of that so that when we make a decision to vote for either of you, we make it intelligently.
I also hope that everybody looks at the job and the time we put in here also, Mrs. Bazza. Thank you.
Yeah, but, okay, thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Joan Rubino, 48, North Ruth. I would like to address the town clerk's salary. In 2017, she was earning $95,000. With a 2% increase, that takes it to 96,900. Now, the present salary as of September is $100,400. My question is, where did the $3,500 come from?
It's a stipend because in addition to the clerk's duties, he's responsible for the keeper of the public records and administration of all public records in the town, which is a statutory requirement. It's a statutory role. So rather than having to hire someone for that, we provide a stipend, and we provide stipends for our people.
Well, exactly what does that entail? The public records? I mean, that was under the job description of the town clerk. That is part of it, public records. So now, what additional public records are you talking about?
It's a statutory requirement. I don't have the full statute in front of me, Mrs. Rubino, but I'd be happy to sit down with you and walk you through it, but it is additional responsibility.
The other thing I have to discuss is, when the town clerk was promoted to her present position in 2014, she was earning $65,900. And now her present salary, as you know, is over $100,000. Now during the course of four years, she had a 52.84% increase in pay, which means And if you average that out, it comes to a whopping $8,677.50 per year as an increase. That's astronomical by any standards. And how do you justify that kind of increase? Are your other employees getting comparable increases?
Mrs. Rubino, can you tell me, what do clerks get paid in... Mrs. Rubino, can you tell me, what do clerks get paid in Essex County? All of them, individual jobs and roles?
You mean town clerk, city clerk?
The municipal clerk in each of the 21 townships comprising Essex County, as well as Passaic County and Bergen County. I know what those salaries are, because I did that study. And what you're talking about is someone who was in a previous role, who got a position into a completely different role, with very significant differences in responsibility, and you're judging it simply by saying, "That person got more money?"
Yes, yes.
I disagree with you.
Because she came from one position to another. Fine, I accept that, and I think that's great. But I don't think you can justify that kind of an increase in four years.
Mrs. Rubino?
I really don't. I don't care what other people are making in other towns. It doesn't apply to us.
It absolutely does apply to us.
No, listen...
We have to be fair. We have to be competitive.
Okay.
According to job responsibilities. And you can't look at someone and say that these are the job responsibilities, and this is what any person, whether it's the clerk or any person, a police officer, a other person who works in town, and say, "By the way, this is a job responsibility. This is what the market requirement is for that job. And by the way, we're just not there, so we're not going to do that."
All right, well, maybe you did research it, but I did a little research, too.
Thank you, but I did. I did, Mrs. Rubino.
And I went to the Bayonne City Clerk, and this person has 43 years of experience. The population of Bayonne is 66,238 people, and he earns $111,537. Now, Bayonne's population is a little bit greater than two times our population, and he has 43 years of experience, and our clerk has 13, nine years of experience. So, you know, we want to talk about other people in other towns. You know, we can come back with our own figures. And I say that...
Thank you. You can have your point of view, right? But it's a determination that I have to make for all of my employees. I do a very comprehensive review of what those salaries are, based upon what the responsibilities are. Also, the role of the clerk in a commissioned form of government versus a Faulkner Act form of government, which is more challenging. So the demands are high, and I appreciate your point of view on the money, Mrs. Rubino. I'd be happy to come to my office, and I will sit down and debate with you.
Well, did you give your other employees comparable raises through the years?
Absolutely, I've given raises to all of my employees.
As much as 52% higher?
In other positions, yes.
In this short period of time?
Sure. On a change of responsibilities, absolutely. And over time, yes. And by the way, when I start people in my department, I start them at low salaries. And then as they gain experience, as they gain time, I adjust their salary, not just on a 2% basis, but what's the additional value that they contribute to the township? Because as they learn more and as they do their job, they're entitled to get paid more relevant to what the requirements are of the job and what the market is. So as part of my own planning, I start people at a much lower salaries, and then as they improve in that responsibility, I advance them, in some cases, yes, more than 2%, because it's consistent with what the job responsibilities are and the additional value that the town is receiving. So if you want to look at a spectrum, you can't look at it at one time. You have to look at it over a period of time and understand my compensation approach before you simply say it's an increase in salary. It's about what's the value that's being contributed? What's the experience and the contribution of every employee? And I will do that while I'm a commissioner for all of my employees.
I would be interested in seeing a spreadsheet on how you have done this.
Mr. Mayor, may I comment also, if I may?
Sure, sure.
Ma'am, I probably work with the clerk more than any other employee on a day-to-day basis, other than people in her own office. And I can tell you that in our form of government, she is basically a pseudo-administrator. She doesn't have the benefit of a business administrator who is the centralized person that handles many of the things that she has to handle. In those other towns, like Bayonne, they have a strong business administrator, Faulkner form of government. We don't have that. I'm not saying it's a bad thing. It's a good thing. She handles the job tremendously on a day-to-day basis, with a tremendous amount of pressure. She's really got five separate bosses in Nutley, each of the commissioners. She answers to each of them. She has a tremendous amount of responsibility relative to the immense amount of Oprah requests that we get. And I think that her salary, frankly, is probably low. And I've compared it to other clerks, what other clerks do. I've spoken to other clerks. I've worked with other clerks in other towns. No one has the responsibility that she has.
I don't believe that.
And just respectfully, from my opinion...
I don't believe that. I'm sorry to say that.
I'm just going to give you my opinion, and you can take it for whatever you want. I disagree with you, and I don't think it... Her job responsibilities are completely different than what she had before, and she gets more and more responsibility every day, and I think she does an excellent job.
Such as?
Well, every... She has to deal with...
What are you talking about? More responsibility?
She has to deal with the state. She has to deal with Oprah. There are so many single responsibilities that she has on a daily basis, I can't even list them all for you. I know with my interaction with her, she's always ready, she's always organized, and she does an excellent job. So I don't think the percentage raise has anything to do with it. It's about fairness, and I think that she earns her salary quite well. And frankly, in other towns, she might be making more money. But, you know, we have a commissioned form of government. It's a little bit different, and I think it's unique and beneficial in many, many ways. But she does not have the benefit of an administrator above her that is really the point person for everyone. And I can only tell you from experience, because I'm sort of in that situation where I don't report to an administrator, I report to all, and I happen to do it, all five gentlemen who are the commissioners. So it's a unique and very pressure-filled job, and I just wanted to put my two cents in, because I work with her every day, and we talk really a few times a day. I'm always here talking to her, meeting with her, going over things. It's an immense job, and I just wanted you to be aware that it's not just about percentage raises. She's entitled to what she's getting.
If it's such a...
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to comment.
If it's such a difficult job, why aren't the educational requirements higher?
I don't know what you're referring to. I know that the clerk goes for classes.
That's not rocket science.
Ma'am, until you are in her shoes, I don't know how you can comment on what her daily functions are. She's educated, she's trained, she's now experienced, and I really don't think that you're taking into consideration all the things that the clerk is responsible for.
But I'm...
Now, you have, everyone has their opinion, and you sure do have yours.
Yes, I agree.
But I just wanted to express mine, because it has to be said.
But I would like to know why the educational requirements are so low, if the job is so difficult. That's all. Also, you had said that you were going to name the builder who was responsible for the apartment situation. You were going to name the builder at this meeting?
I said if we had a settlement and we made it public, yes, everything would be named, and that will be happening as soon as it happens.
You know, this... I don't know what the secrecy is. I mean, you can go to code enforcement and find out that it's Kenneth Mecca.
Okay, so why do you ask if you already know?
Well, I would like it in the public record.
Okay, I would consent that that's the name. How's that?
Very good. That's all I asked for.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Rory Moore, 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Evans, I'm sorry, I'm not prepared. I wasn't going to ask questions tonight. You said you did a survey. I'd like to see a copy of that survey. You said on the clerk's salary...
Mr. Moore, just make your application for an Oprah request, like you always do.
That's not a problem.
And if it's a public record, you'll receive it, as you normally do.
That's not a problem. But I was curious about your remarks. I understand how close you work with the town clerk. That's understandable. But her position is no different than any other clerk, even under a commissioned form of government. Mr. Tucci, I'm sure if I asked a question, because he's from Faulkner, so he would understand better. The clerk's the clerk. She doesn't handle money, or she doesn't handle payments.
Listen, Mr. Moore, I said what I said, and I'm not backing off of it. You can disagree all you want. You'll file an Oprah, we'll give you whatever document you want. But please, you know, I'm not going to argue with you. I made my comment.
I'm not looking to argue with you. That is not my intent to stand up here. I wasn't really prepared to have this conversation this evening. But I don't think it's fair for you to say, "How wonderful and busy she is." But when you look at the town clerks, they all do the same thing. There's no additional...
Mr. Moore, what she has to deal with, from people who write Oprah requests and are nasty and condescending and attack her, and attack her personally, constantly, and you want to stand up there and degrade what she's making?
Like you're doing right now, and somebody's trying to talk, and you're interfering.
I don't, Mr. Moore, you have your opportunity all the time.
It's a little difficult.
You give the clerk a hard time every single day.
And when you see the bullets for tonight, because you know something? When somebody stands up in here, asks a question, you never get an answer. Mrs. Rubino had to ask a question. You couldn't even say Mecca's name.
Mr. Moore...
How many times did she have to ask that?
Mr. Moore, please. The way you write an Oprah request, the way you attack people that work for this township, and I'm not talking about me, because I could care less, but that's what you do, and not everybody knows that, and you expect...
The citizen can't even talk!
Keep talking, Mr. Moore, it's fine.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Carmen Alessio, 81 East Center Street. That's going to be a hard act to follow. I'm sitting here listening to the Hoffn and LaRoche redevelopment. And it sounds good. Ralph Lorenz is there. The college will be there, the biotech college, Rutgers. I'm not versed on who's actually going to be there in the future. But my question to you is, is there a projection of property tax that, quote, you know, Nutley will be receiving? Do you have some kind of a number? I know 20 years ago, the number was 9 million in property revenue taxes that Nutley was getting from Hoffn and LaRoche. Could somebody answer that? Mr. Evans?
Sure, Carmen. So when Hoffn and LaRoche closed, just to, you don't have to go back 20, but in 2013, when they closed, Hoffn and LaRoche was paying $10,500,000 a year, roughly 9% of our tax levy, 50% of our commercial ratable. When they closed, by 2015, roughly 2015, we were down to roughly $4.2 million, or we lost roughly $6 million.
Yeah, I'm pretty aware of that. I was talking about, not to interrupt you, but I am. When they were in the full swing, it was like 9 million. What's the projection of the redevelopment these days that Nutley will be getting a part of? There's two towns involved, Clifton...
Mr. Alessio, let the commissioner finish, because I don't think you let him finish answering your question. You asked a question, let him finish.
Yeah, but who wants to hear about what it trickled down to, to 9 million? We know all that.
Just for historical purposes...
Just cut to the chase.
You asked a question. Let the commissioner finish answering the question. He's going through the history of what happened and where we're going.
To finish, Carmen, I share that because the question is, how much of the $6 million that we lost, will we be able to recover on the conversion of the site? And at this date, we don't have what that number would be, but I should be able to have that number, working with the experts, early in the coming year. It's predicated on decisions that are going to be made as to what the actual redevelopment will be, what will be included, and what the value of those improvements will be. Right now, everything is focused in, has been focused in on occupying the existing buildings. And so, as you can tell, there hasn't been any new construction or new buildings going up, so we don't have that answer. But I hope to, by early in the spring.
See, this is what these people are talking about. We never get a straight answer, some kind of, like, maybe assumption of what it might be.
Mr. Alessio, we don't know exactly what's going to go on, on that site yet. Well, in the next couple of months...
Well, I think that's the most important thing to find out, because our schools are, you know, are not up to par these days, and we could use some financial support. So it's a simple question. Do you have any projection of what the figure may be?
We don't have projections. Well, I'll give it to you. We don't have projections at this time. In the next couple of months, we'll have a further...
3 million, 4 million, 5 million? Before these people sign contracts, I think we ought to know if we're going to get a piece of the action over there, rather than get a piece of the traffic that...
Let me try to explain, Mr. Alessio. Look at the piece of property across from Cathedral Avenue. It's vacant, correct? Something's going to be built on that. We don't know what's going to be built on there yet. We don't have a final plan on that yet. When we have the final plan, as we will in the next couple of months, we'll be able to project the kind of ratable that it's going to project, right? Now, to look on our side of the line, there's very, very little vacant space that there's going to be building on. Luckily, we were able to preserve some when the medical school came in, where we were going to have a temporary parking lot. That's all now nice and green. That's available for future development, where we'll be able to get some more ratables. That's down the road.
I'd like to rephrase the question. What kind...
Let me finish now. So on the left-hand side...
You should beating around the bush.
I'm not beating around the bush. I'm telling you exactly what it is. On the left-hand side of the railroad tracks, there's a vacant piece of property. It's open for development. It's going to be developed. We don't know exactly what's going to be there yet. Over the next couple of months, we'll have a better idea. We'll be able to give you a projection of what we're going to get back in taxes from there. On the front of 102, where Modern Meadow is, there's another piece of property that's open for development. We believe we know what's going to be there. We could probably project that site, and what's going to be there. That's one piece out of five different vacant spots. So for you to ask us what we project, at this point, we don't know. But in the next couple of months, we'll have an answer.
I guess I'll have to come back in the next couple of months. That seems to be the response that everybody gets out in this audience. I'll have to come back.
We can only tell you what we know. We can only tell you what we know, Mr. Alessio.
There's a thing called an impact fee. What type of an impact fee will we receive when that seven-story car garage for Ralph Lorenz going up with 2,500 cars that are going to use Kingsland Road, obviously? They may frequent some of the businesses like Neil or Mr. Patraco's Deli, which is a nice thing, a handful here, a handful there. But I know when I get in the car, and I'm on Washington Avenue, and I make a left to go up Kingsland, it's like a highway to, I want to say hell, but I'll say highway to heaven. You're there forever. It's congested. It's not a good thing. I think, and I know, that there should be some kind of an impact fee that we should receive from the state to facilitate a state school that's going to cream our streets with all of this traffic and ruin our quality of life. That's my opinion. So before you take your second step, you should get back to the first step to find out what kind and how much property tax we may assume to get, so that we can get help with our town, with some of the infrastructure that's going on here. Bridges are falling apart. It's like, I can't go up Center Street. I got to, like, what am I doing? I might as well get a pole go stick and jump over the cars, because it's ridiculous now.
Mr. Alessio, I promise you that this Board of Commissioners will be in negotiations with the developer to get those kind of fees that we need, and the services, and the infrastructure going forward. I promise you that.
After the deal is done, then you're going to come back, you know, and then...
It's all part of the negotiation.
No, it's not a part of it. We deserve a straight answer as citizens of this town.
Well, I'm giving you a straight answer. You don't sound like the answer, so...
What answer are you giving me? You don't know? Come on.
Thank you, Mr. Alessio. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
I would just like to say one thing. I have never seen Rory Moore or anybody else come to these meetings and act in a disrespectful way. And for you to berate the citizens who come here, I think is a disgrace.
Ma'am, if you read what he writes to the town, to the clerk, to other people, he doesn't say it here in the meeting, but he says it in writing on a constant basis. He files complaints with the state, ridiculous complaints that make no sense, and attack people that live here and work here. I'm going to react to that. And I've just about had it, because he doesn't do here what he does in writing, to slander people and defame them, people that work hard here. Okay? And I'm not talking about myself, because I don't care. I can say whatever he wants about me, and he has. That's fine. But he attacks people here all the time, and you're not seeing it, because we don't publicize it. But I'm telling you, let him show you the things that he writes to the town. Let him show you the Oprah requests that he makes when he makes nasty comments to people. you the Oprah requests that he makes when he makes nasty comments to people. Let him show you the complaints he's written to the governors or every other agency and writing ridiculous things about the township. And that's why I'm reacting. I apologize if you think I'm being overbearing. I heard you say I'm obnoxious, and that's fine. I've been called worse. But I'm going to defend the people...
Well, I'm going to save not...
I'm going to defend the people that work here, because they need to be defended once in a while.
You're very condescending, not only to Lori, but to other people.
I, I'll take that under advisement. Thank you. I apologize if you think that I am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Amy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. Real quick, just to quickly revisit the term limits. The reason why we need these term limits is, and the reason this came about, is because our planning board has proven itself ineffective. It's taken 10 years, 10 years, to create a definition for mixed use and density. That, by any town standard, is way too long. The zoning board has been asking for guidance since 2008. There's absolutely no excuse.
And it's being, and it's being done right this second.
After 10 years, though, there's no excuse.
I can't answer for 10 years, Mrs. Baza. I can answer for the last two and a half.
All I can say is, in the past 10 years, the development, the variances that are getting approved on these mixed-use buildings, is they're being overbuilt. And we know it. And it's affecting our schools. So, again, we need new people on our planning board. Another question I had, Mr. Jen in Tempo, regarding the employee handbook. Will there be an anti-nepotism policy included in that employee handbook?
I think there is a reference to it. I don't know the exact wording in it, but you'll see it.
I think that's needed at this time. And just to support Ms. Rubino's claim about an inflated salary, our municipal clerk has trusted clerks to help her with her workload. So, it's not as if she's doing it alone. I just want to make that noted, okay? Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing done?
Need a second? Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracco.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpella.
Aye.
Times 9:06.
Good night, everybody.